Called the Consulting Board to meet, commission to order. First time we've been in person since March of 2020. First time I've had to gavel since 2020. So, maybe I'll use it a little more. We have our pants on and we're ready to go. Seated tonight is Ben Philbrook, myself David Rothman, our garden young Lynn Conway. And seated in lieu of Fred Dykman is Chuck Shan. And our alternate is Ryan Deese. Minutes of the previous meeting. Do I hear a motion? Any discussion? All those in paper? Both, nice. Keith?
Well, we don't have the normal number of lights in this room tonight, so some of us will have to yell. But item 4D of the administrative, the item 4D1 is Green Skies Clean Energy LLC. Liminary discussion of conceptual plan for solar energy facility to both the two locations. Crossbeats located at 54 Jeremy Hill Road, accessoried map 90 lot 1 lot 1. And Manchester Mill Road accessoried map 169 lot 1 lot 4. Just as a simple review, valid plans have not been submitted at this time. The reason for this discussion is just to let the commission know Green Skies potential plan to apply. And then the Siding Council for solar facilities, because due to their size, they're not limited to pounds, don't even weapons per day, but they get renewed and fortified and they have Siding Council. Similar to some other, we used one to be found in town recently. Would that will hand over to on Green Skies or?
Good evening, members of the commission and welcome back. We're a pleasure to be here tonight and present to two new exciting projects. You've seen us before. I believe Elm Ridge was before you for an introduction and Tagawam. So for those, I'm not sure who was here a couple of years ago. So I'm just going to give a brief history and very brief at the request of your chairman. Because I know you have a full agenda today. Green Skies was founded in 2009. We originate, develop and construct. My name is Bonnie Pataki and I'm a project developer with Green Skies. We are one of the largest solar developers nationwide. We have currently 250 megawatts built. We are in one-third of the Connecticut municipalities here. So we hope to continue our strong relationship with doing ground mounted solar throughout Connecticut. At this time, I'm going to probably hand over the presentation because I'm sure in your packets there is information about Green Skies. There's my contact information should you have any questions or want to call. Please free to do so. Also, we have, within your packets, we show the footprint for the solar arrays. And also some pictures which shows the cardinal directions of different points for each of the solar sites. I also by method of introduction here, I wanted to say that we have, do have the owner of Jeremy Hill and she is here tonight with her daughter. So, and that's what, so. And for Devon Point Farms, you may be familiar with them. They are partnering with Green Skies for the solar, ground mounted solar array on Jeremy Hill Road. So we're going to start with that. Thank you for your time.
Can you guys hear me okay? So my name is Steve Coaches. I'm a professional engineer with VHB. We're the design consultant for the engineering and the environmental services for the solar project. This project, I think a portion of this was. So for this project, a portion of it was included as part of the Signal Hill subdivision, which was in front of you guys in about 2014. This is the southern portion of that project. The majority of the land today has been cleared of trees. The total footprint of the solar project is about 28 acres. This is a five-megawatt AC project, about seven megawatts DC. Right now, we're assuming the use of 475 watt panels. Access to the site will be from the northeast on an existing cleared road through the wetlands to Jeremy Hill Road. And I'll just go down some quick action items that we would report to the Siding Council as part of their process. The FEMA classification is that there's no flood hazard zones on this site. It's kind of at the ridge of a hill. Aquifer protection is that there's no mapped aquifer protection areas by the state on the site. The groundwater classification is GA. Portion, part of the solar permitting process is to determine if you're going to affect the use of any airports. So using the FAA online tool, we do not exceed any of the criteria for any adjacent airports, so we will have no impact to glare. The NDB status is that the site, as you see in front of you, does not fall within a shaded NDB area for wildlife. But we are submitting a determination request to the Wildlife Division to be conservative and go through the process. SHPO, the Historic Preservation Office. We have completed a phase one archaeological and cultural study. Portions of the site were deemed to be moderate to high sensitivity from that desktop and field analysis due to its nature from farming about 50 years ago. Although it's been wooded and unused for the last 50 years. VHB delineated the wetlands. So looking at the map, there's kind of a ridge line north to south down the middle of the site. There's wetlands on the west, there's wetlands on the east. Those will be fully protected as part of our state stormwater permitting. Vernal pools, we do have some vernal pools in the southwest portion of the site as well as in the northeast portion of the site adjacent to the access road. We completed, VHB completed that vernal pool analysis this spring. And the report is being prepared and will be part of our Siding Council application. Aside from that, the only visual impacts of this project would be to those two residences to the east of the project. 97 and 99 Jeremy Hill Road. So we've walked the site a couple of times and that's really the only spot where there will be any visibility to this project. So I'm not sure, is this kind of a question to answer or is it a presentation for our? That map that you have that has the pink outline of the solar area is, is that right there?
I have a question. How close are those two residences?
Based on this map with the scale bar on the bottom, the residences have set back. We're, we have to be at least 100 feet away from wetlands within any of our development. That, the closest residence are probably 250 to 300 feet from our nearest development.
Could you just move over a little bit? Thank you. So the residents, what's the elevation of the solar farm from, from the residence? Is it uphill?
Yes. So we're, the panels will be on the side of a hill. So at the top of the hill.
I can see now that he knows.
I wasn't in your way now. The top of the hill is at an elevation of about 320. Those are two-foot contours that you see. So the residences are down from the top of the hill, probably by about 30, 40, 50 feet, something like that. I mean, it ranges across the site because we're building down the side of the hill. So the lowest panel is probably 20 feet above the house and the highest panel is probably about 50 feet above the house.
Okay.
That's something that Green Skies is looking at right now. They're doing public outreach to the towns, the neighbors, and they're seeing, you know, the visual impacts of the project. And Green Skies will be amenable to work with the neighbors as we've done in the past to provide screening. That's, that's, that works for them.
So I think with the Elm Ridge or the golf course project that we had, that we're screening the entire circumference, all the way around with trees as well as fence. And is that what you're looking into? Both fence and trees?
Well, if you look at your map, I think would be helpful. If you will see, this is a heavily wooded area around the solar array. So there will be, there's actually, it's forest, wooded areas. So screening will be provided if necessary. But they're going to be, right now, there's a substantial amount of wooded area unlike Elm Ridge. But of course, I have, we will accommodate any residences who feel that they need screening. So far, I have done outreach through letters and I haven't received any calls or emails. So, but yes, we, that would be, we would offer the same accommodation as we did at Elm Ridge.
So I know it's kind of hard to see on this, but there is an existing tree line that in the northern area, it does jut onto our property a little bit. And in the southern portion, it has been cleared roughly to the property line. So generally, the majority of the trees that you're seeing on that are probably on the neighbors. But there is about a 150-foot to 200-foot buffer in the northern half of the project on our property.
So one concern that I would have is that if you say there's a natural buffer, then it's not on your property. It really isn't under your control. So, you know, that would be something that would be a concern to me. That what buffer are you providing? Not what buffer exists on somebody else's property. But if they all of a sudden decide to put a swimming pool in their backyard, then all of a sudden, you know, they've got full view of this. So that would be a concern to me, blurring actually going on your property. Obviously, and also the area that extends from the solar farm to out to Jeremy Hill Road. I assume that's the right of way where you're trying back into the grid?
And in terms of the connection?
Is that, is that what this connection is here? To fly back to the grid from the array?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So what takes place within that? Is all of that cleared? Do you own that? Is that a right of way? What's the status of the ownership of that land and what actually?
That is the ownership, it is actually owned by the property owner.
Okay.
Okay. So there, I'm sorry. So yes, and that is actually, if you look at your photo, you can see the access road and that is going to pretty much remain the same.
Okay.
Okay?
So that's already cleared?
That is already cleared. So we did actually have a site walk with their little weapons. They were interested and so we actually have North Stonington and then come up, we entered into Stonington. And there's a cross in there. And so they wanted, they were interested in that, that's the cross. And the question was, if we were going to widen the crossing or bring in more material, the answer is no. It is going to remain essentially the same construction.
And are the connections going to be in subsurface conduits or the connections going to be pole lines?
There are going to be pole lines. At this time, everything is conceptual, again, now from the Siding Council and also here working with EverSource. So there are poles there available and there are going to be some conduit, but they're also going to be, actually, in rivers also. But full conceptual plan has not been presented to the Siding Council on terms of the elect people that are solar side.
I can add a little more color.
My preference, my preference would be, you know, for, for an area like this, is that the more that could be put underground, the better. The more visual interference that you can avoid like pole lines. You know, our standards for a subdivision are subsurface utilities. So this is, you know, predominantly a rural area. If you could observe those standards, that would be something that I would be.
The interconnection process is an agreement between us and EverSource. Sometimes it's not, we have to adhere to their guideline and their specification. So collateral, sometimes we are not really, we are expected on, we must do it this way if we have to do it. So as a conduit, we can report to EverSource and see how they react.
Thank you. Actually, I'd like to know if the comments are just made also.
Yeah, just to add a little more color. I mean, to Bonnie's point, we're, we're working through a similar track right now with EverSource. There's, there's a lot of different lanes to go down. We've got the EverSource application that takes a long time. So we won't have any firmed up details for probably at least another six months to eight months through the EverSource application. But generally speaking, I think to answer your question, Green Skies will own and maintain the line most likely to the road. There, and then there's what's called the point of interconnect, which is the transfer of power to the energy company's, utility company's responsibility. So that will most likely be a riser pole at the street. And that is the point where it shifts from Green Skies responsibility maintenance to EverSource's responsibility of maintenance. But that's to be determined in the future.
Just so, you know, my concern if this comes out would be if it could be put underground, I would prefer that it be put underground.
Yeah. And I think I can speak on Green Skies behalf that their preference will likely be underground as well. It's just, just easier. No, so I can, I can answer that. These are all going to be fixed tilt panels and they have a tolerance in construction of about 15%. So we've actually, why the shape is so funny is that we've avoided the areas of the site, namely in the, in the southwestern pole side to the side of the access road and then the southeastern corner where the grades exceed 15%. And the goal there was to not do any grading. So outside of the limits of the stormwater basins and construction of the access road, we're not proposing any earthwork. Yes. Yeah, the, the seven around the outside. And those will be permanent features that will meet peak rate attenuation and water quality treatment as well.
So the goal of this project also is we're partnering with Devon Point Farm is to have grazing within the solar array. Either sheep, most likely, and to keep a coag use. So I just want to mention that. I have a good booming voice. No, it doesn't record? Okay. So our goal is to keep a coag use within the solar array and we hope to have sheep grazing. The owner also has, is maybe considering other livestock, geese, but that's to be decided. So, and they already have a own and operate a cattle farm. Thank you.
I have no further questions. I'll move into the description of Lantern Hill. Bonnie, you want to grab me the agenda real quick? So this is the Lantern Hill Road. I don't know where is best place to stand, but I'll move for everyone else. This is the Lantern Hill Road Plan. It's located at 229 Lantern Hill Road. This is going to be a two-megawatt project. So about 40% of the size of the Jeremy Hill Project with about 14 acres of disturbance. This is the existing farm field with the Whitford Brook to the northeast and, oh, sorry, to the northwest as well as a town line between Leadyard and Stonington. I'll flip this. So the panels will be located as much to the west as we can to, so that the farmer can continue to farm the field in the eastern part of the development. This project is actually, got approved as one megawatt of fixed tilt and one megawatt of tracker panels. The tracker panels actually track the sun across the day. So that's why the shape of those panels on the east is a little different. They function a little differently. But the, the general idea of the site plan is the same. We're not proposing any regrading here. We're not proposing tree clearing. There will be stormwater basins around the outside that will be permanent. The site will be accessed from the east from the existing driveway to 229 Lantern Hill Road, which is shared with the water treatment plant. And then going down the list of the items for the Siding Council. The FEMA classification is that there is a 100-year flood hazard zone across a portion of the site associated with the Whitford Brook. So we're going to have to look into elevating the panels and protecting them against flood damage. Aquifer protection wise, there is an aquifer protection area in the eastern portion of the site associated with the water treatment plant, pretty much just off of this page that you're looking at right now. But the development area is not within an aquifer protection area and we're not proposing any disturbance within the aquifer protection area. Groundwater classification is that the site is also GA, which is the best groundwater classification. Again, the FAA criteria is that we did not exceed the criteria. So we will not impact any airports with this project. NDB status is that we do, a couple of years ago, we had reached out to Wildlife Division on this project and we received a final determination. So that is what you need to get your stormwater permit. They identified spotted turtles and banded sunfish at the site, which have a couple of proposed conservation measures, clearing restrictions and the such. SHPO status is also very similar to Jeremy Hill. Portions of this site were listed as moderate high sensitivity. And again, we will be performing shovel tests over the next month or two to look for more artifacts as well. So the wetlands here are all along the northern and the western port part of the site associated with the Whitford Brook. We also did a vernal pool study this spring. Didn't find any vernal pools out there. And lastly, regarding visual impacts, I'll switch it. So this sheet up now is just the eastern part of what you were looking at previously. There are a couple of residences down here in the southeast portion of the site. But I've been out there a couple of times and they're really only visible when you're in the farm fields right behind them. And where the panels are going, there's no residences that are able to see the panels. So that's kind of the quick hitting information on that and I'll open up to questions. I believe there's two. I haven't done, I haven't personally done investigations.
I'll move it back to it. I just wondered, is it, is it, is it a good distance from the wells or is it, if the aquifer protect downtown were developed, is there anything? Anything with the cameras?
It is not enough for protection area. It's a stratified grid. So in terms of.
My God, it's very near the coast of the wells, that's all I know.
So in terms of the impact, we're not expecting impact. There's not going to be subsurface excavation that would impact stratified drift. Pretty much, you know, it'd be what flow rate that. There's not going to be any, we're not very careful, anything to that nature. So actually very minimal impact activity installed in ground mounted solar array compared to other activities that are covered under the act of protection.
Is there requiring a comment or not?
No, they have not. They have no contact and they have not been provided in.
Elevation change based on the two different types of array? What would that be?
So not necessarily an elevation change, but the fixed tilts vary from two to three feet at the lowest end up till about nine feet at the top end. The trackers are generally, if they're, if they're perfectly flat, they're about nine to 10 feet off the ground. And then they tilt east and west to match the sun up to like a 45 or 60 degree tilt. So.
And is this property currently planted? Is it, isn't it agriculture? Yes, yeah, sweet corn production. That would all continue outside of the solar array. Within the solar array, we are going to be planting pollinator grasses and we hope to be doing some beekeeping, apiaries around the solar array. But that's proposed. We haven't submitted yet to the Siding Council. But there's going to be no change in the sweet corn production that will continue outside of the leased area, outside of the solar array. Thank you.
That's correct. No, I've looked, I've looked through the flood insurance study. So there's no published base flood elevations. I think that's, you know, or cross-sections associated with that portion. It's just a delineated line from the map as far as I've found. I've already kind of done that and, you know, just to have an anticipation of what the flood levels might be like. What I was seeing based off of the existing grades is that we, we're expecting probably closer to the brook, about four feet of inundation. So, but we're not getting that close with panels. The closest we would get, we might expect a foot to of inundation during 100-year event. Yeah. No, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't regret, no. No, there's no fill. We're not looking to move any of the grids. So essentially, when you have these things on poles, posts in the ground, you just, you have longer poles. So then your racking is installed higher up, so. It's a, it's a very good question, I will say. It's a hot topic of debate in the state right now. I will answer it as fully as I can and without taking too long. But generally speaking, if you are at under 50% ground cover ratio in terms of top-down, if the panels take up less than half of your total acreage, then the state has, has deemed policy-wise that, to your point, it's just, it's just the underlying vegetation cover that you really, that's your post, you know, post-construction runoff condition. If your panels are spaced tighter than 50%, so they take up, you know, if you look. If your panels are spaced tighter than fifty percent, so they take up, you know, if you looked at a five acre block, if they took more than half of that. Then you would have to treat them as impervious in terms of water quality treatment, so. Um the 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 big picture methodology is generally that it's all tied to the underlying vegetation. Um and we are being conservative in terms of uh assuming that the grass will struggle to grow a little bit, even though we found that. On multiple sites, it hasn't struggled to grown on under the solar panels. But conservatively, we're assuming like a a poor or fair grass uh in the post-construction condition rather than a good grass. Yes, yes, you would. That's correct, and uh just to complete the thought, there's also methodology as part of the appendix I. Of the Stormwater General Permit from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Which notes that you have to drop a hydrologic soil group when you're when you're doing a pre-depost analysis as well to be an extra layer of conservative, so. Um but to your point, yes, if if we find that the pre-post. Um is not not matched, then we would have to incorporate detention into the site.
I have one more, um what is the general elevation of this property, is it all sloping towards the northwest, towards Whitford Brook? See the contour lines from here.
Uh no problem, I'll walk you through it, um so generally, this is the highest point in the site right now. Uh and and you know, we're not touching the grids, so generally, the contour lines go to the west and to the north. Just shedding towards the brook, there is a portion of the site that drains this way to the south. Onto a neighboring farm field, that's why we have this basin to protect that. But yes, generally, it's to the west and to the north towards the brook, um. The absolute elevation is around uh like forty to fifty on the site or something like that.
And to follow up on Chuck's question on the previous site, how are you getting to the street, by pole or underground?
Um I think it's gonna kinda be the same answer as last time, uh for the record. Uh to be determined through the ever-source consultation, I think the preference will be underground, um unless ever-source feels differently. Um going back to. You know, the I I think the likely is that we'll either be coming this way across the farm fields or using this existing road to the north. And then this is the existing driveway here that water treatment plan is right up here.
The property to the west, is that that field, that's a different owner? The big field. Is it west?
Which one you talking about, the uh this 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 plant, this is uh plan north is straight up, so.
Right down below.
This this one down here, the south?
So it's it's right on the property line then?
Yes, yeah, there's a, the the property line is right here, so we're using this this property, this is a different owner, but. Uh the fields are delineated by a little stone wall and berm of trees. You will be, and you'll be getting copies of all our materials when we file at the siting council in four to six weeks. Uh so we're looking to file both of these projects at the siting council uh within within the next four to six weeks. Um that process typically takes about up to six months, so we would be expecting to get those approvals towards the end of the year. And then working through construction documents early two thousand twenty-two with a goal to get to construction next spring.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh thank you Keith, uh for the record, uh my name is Norm Tebow. Uh Killingley Engineering Associates and I'm here uh representing Niles Holding LLC this evening. Uh with a, for a can application uh located at twelve Niles Road. Uh the the proposal is to construct a twenty-six hundred square foot single-family home. On the last existing undeveloped lot of this subdivision. Um it's a uh, you know, the lot itself, uh it's only about, it's a point three six acres, uh sixteen thousand square feet. Um uh it's wider at the road frontage, a little over one hundred feet at the road frontage and it drops down. Uh to about seventy-one feet uh at the coastal line. Now we're here before you because all, pretty much all of the activity uh is within the the coastal jurisdiction line of a hundred feet. And um we've gone through um uh reviews uh with um. With Keith, with engineering, uh with the state Connecticut DEEP. And uh we've addressed um pretty much all of their, uh not I wanna, I don't wanna say pretty much all their issues, I think we've addressed all of their. Um issues, uh the the property is zoned RM fifteen, which is a residential moderate density. And um we conform to the zoning requirements for this zone. The uh one thing that uh that I will um mention, this this particular zone uh. Calls for a ten-foot side yard property line setback, uh but the um. The uh um uh association uh for Mason's Island actually calls for a fifteen-foot, so. Uh which actually keeps the uh the project a little bit more on on its own property and provides a little more separation uh from the neighboring residences. Uh there is public water available here, uh but not public sewer, uh we do have approval uh from a legislative health department. Um and uh the the property uh directly fronts Mystic Harbor. Uh there are no tidal wetlands on the site, but it is located in the FEMA Zone AE with the base base flood elevation of eleven. Uh the uh uh first floor elevation of the residence is set at elevation twelve. Uh which which is required, that we have to be uh one foot above uh the base flood elevation. Uh we also conform to uh both uh the the zoning regulations for height. As well as the Mason's Island regulations, which are a little bit different and actually a little bit more restrictive. Uh than than the town's uh zoning regulations. Uh very little grading is proposed for the for the lot itself, it's a relatively flat lot. Uh we were fortunate in that we were able to find some decent soils toward the fertile lot to put the uh the septic system in. Uh back toward the lot and I think it is probably preferable for this commission. Uh anyway, to uh to put the the septic system toward the front because it's much further away from uh uh from the waterfront. Uh but uh test holes that we excavated further toward the back of the property showed that there was some fill there, so um. It would have, number one, resulted in having to take all that fill out and fill it with septic fill. Uh would have made a much more um uh pricey uh system to build and also would have involved a lot more um. Uh disturbance closer to the uh to the tidal line. Um and uh. So you know, fortunately, we were able to find these uh you know decent um uh soils toward the front of the property. Um we have uh gone through the uh Connecticut DEEP review. I and I think the biggest bone of contention for this particular project was originally, uh we had uh we had shown. Uh the existing um stone, uh it's a boulder wall that sort of separates uh the existing grass area. Uh where it drops down a couple of feet to uh to some boulders and some tit- where there's some tidal action. Uh the owner originally wanted to fill that to kind of match the side properties. Um both properties uh to the, I guess to the. No um southeast and uh and northwest have uh have retaining walls that that stick out much further than this particular property. It was the uh the developer's uh initial thought that he wanted to match tho- that particular line. Uh but after having it reviewed by the Connecticut DEEP, um and he also had someone look at it that um. Uh that is a little more qualified in evaluating these types of things than I am. Uh and he was pretty much told at that point, just forget about it, it's not going to happen, so just take it off the plan, it doesn't matter if the. Connecticut DEEP is going to look at it or not, uh they're probably going to deny it if you wanted to do that, so. So uh our plans had noted uh all throughout that uh Connecticut DEEP approval. Would have been required in order to do this activity that he was proposing. Um so we had shown it on the plans, um number one, because the owner wanted it, but secondly, uh we didn't wanna. We wanted to be upfront with the commission and with the town as well to to show them. Uh you know, what the ultimate proposal would have been for this site, even if this commission did not did not have the ultimate authority uh to approve it. Um uh but as I said, a- as we went on and 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 we did a little more research and we talked to people who knew a little bit more about this. Um it was just decided that we would just take that off the plans and. Go with something that was a a little simpler, uh uh something that's just a little more common. Uh compared to what has been developed uh on this property, uh on the abutting properties for this particular development. Um the uh the engineering con- comments uh that were that were put forth to uh forth to us. Uh were relatively simple, um a lot of it was notation. Um we had to, he noted that we had to obtain a permit for any improvements to be constructed in the right of way. Uh which would be essentially connecting to uh the existing water line. Uh we we had to note that the um owner is required to re- uh receive approval of the septic system design. Uh from the health department, which we do have. Um uh there was also some notation adding, uh the outlining the driveway material where the lawn is. Uh I might note that uh we are going to be doing a a pervious semi- or semi-pervious material for the driveway, it'll be the. Either like a a pea stone or crushed shells, um it will not be a paved driveway. Um roof drainage will be discharged overland, uh we are showing uh at the terminus of where the roof drains. Um come on onto the property, we're gonna have some outlet protection and some crushed stone. Uh so that uh it'll encourage sheet flow uh from where the roof drains uh drain out uh toward the sound. Uh we added some additional erosion and sedimentation controls. Um and uh we added a couple of additional spot grades to more clearly define where the slopes of the driveway. Uh how that works and and how the slopes around the house work as well. Um as far as the um. Uh the flood plain management consultant, there were comments on the plans. Uh which I believe we addressed, we had to specify the vertical datum throughout. Um and we made sure it was put on the architectural plans as well as the site plans. Uh the the um proposed floor elevations are uh were acceptable as well. Uh the the flood vents were were engineered uh by the architect to make sure that uh we had a proper. Proper flood passage capacity uh in the lower level of the of the uh residents. And um. Uh there was also some comments about electrical outlets in the garage and storage room need to be above that twelve feet. Uh which which are um noted on the architectural plans as well. Um. Uh as far as the um Mystic Harbor Management Commission, uh building official and the fire district, there were no comments. Uh and then finally, the the planning department had um comments, number one was uh the relocation of the boulder wall, which we removed from the plans. Um another one uh was with regard to the setbacks being only ten feet. Uh in the RM fifteen, but we showed it fifteen because that's what's required by the uh the Mason's Island, a more restrictive components. Um we noted that the driveway material will be crushed shells or pea gravel. And uh we revised uh uh the zoning table to show conformance with the maximum floor area ratio of zero point two. Uh conformance to the RM fifteen maximum height requirements and uh and also conformance to the coastal design height. So um. A lot of uh, a lot of moving parts for uh, you know, which which would seem to be a simple plan, but obviously there are. Uh a a lot of uh different elements that we have to make sure that we conform to in order for this to be constructed, so. Um I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just a, just a quick one, uh and if I asked you this question previously on this application, I apologize. I see the coastal management boundaries, I see the FEMA lines and the hundred-year flood plain destination. And I'm wondering if in your perusal of the FEMA maps, if this was within a little long area at all?
Um I believe it is, yes.
So, so if it is, what is the effect of the wave action on this property, the best show I can follow?
Um.
I only have a a copy on my computer.
Uh I I I believe that that came up in the limited uh. Yeah, that's the limited uh intercoastal wave action, right, is you're, you're speaking about, yeah, um. Um the the mean high water line is the preference. Yeah, okay. Okay, okay.
So that answers my question.
All right, you're welcome.
Yes, I had a question, um you have a buried propane tank.
Correct.
How deep is that and how close will that be to your elevation of high water?
Well, that's that's going to have to be uh anchored.
On a, on a concrete pad.
Yeah, it 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 is, uh well, it's it it is actually going to be positioned within the flood, within, you know, well, well below the eleven feet. So um um as far as, you know, the the regular groundwater elevation that that we. That we actually came across doing test pits for the health department, uh it doesn't drop into that, but obviously, if there's any kind of uh. Of a severe flooding activity here, that's going to be underwater.
You you couldn't put it on the roadside of the house?
Um no, because we we have to, it has to be at least twenty-five feet away. Uh from the septic system, it has to be ten feet away from the house, it has to be ten feet away from the property line. There are so, there are so many things that you have to make sure it meets.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion on this application?
Something you can add, really, you know, the comments, you know, you go ahead for aggressive, you might think, just be unique. Recommend the stipulations, just that, why are you choosing to make these on the permits, smart plans, should be signed by a commission for.
Anybody here?
Um recorded by me.
I have a vote in on that.
I apologize, did you want me to act in the press?
Yeah, you're you're on. Because you had to continue from the public hearing last meeting, and you were here, and Ryan, Ryan wasn't.
I second the emotion.
Any discussion, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Eat, move on, is there a reason the door has to be open?
I'll get it.
So as far as the other old business items, item five B, um which is PZ. Two uh twenty-one-ten SD and CAM, Ruth Bowers, subdivision. subdivision on 187 White Hall Ave. That's been withdrawn by the applicant. Item 5C could just be tabled until the next meeting, which is a CAM application for a house at Chippichog Trail in Mystic. And the next meeting will be at a different date, it's not the normal date of June 15th. It is the next week, Tuesday, June 22nd at 7:00 PM at this location.
There's only one meeting in July.
Right, right.
Regardless of what short time is.
So that just leaves the continued public hearing for tonight for the solar energy.
Continued public hearing of PZ 2105 RA Town of Stoneington. Continued from May 18th. Seated for this meeting are Ben Felbert, myself, David Rathbun, Gardine Young, Lynn Conway, and Chuck Sheehan, who was an alternate at last meeting, but he was at the last meeting. We continue, where are we? Keith, you can, it's your floor.
Yeah, well, since the last meeting, at the last hearing, the commission had comments, you know, concerns about the scale of some of these ground-mounted panels being potentially too large. So what I did is propose some modifications that substantially reduce the size that the ground-mounted accessory solar panels can be. One of the biggest ones is that the maximum area of ground-mounted facilities is substantially reduced just to 2,000 square feet, whether it's residential or commercial. The commission review of ground-mounted ones of over 10,000 square feet is eliminated because they can't get that big. The maximum lot coverage of ground-mounted arrays is reduced from 25% of the lot to just 10. And with the maximum size of only 2,000 square feet, the 10% coverage rule really only impacts properties that are under 20,000 square feet. Zoning permit applications only required for ground-mounted arrays and these modifications, which maintains our existing process of basically just signing off on building permits that are submitted for the roof-mounted ones, because there's not really anything to review as long as they don't stick up past the roof. These changes eliminate the ability to build ground-mounted arrays in the front setbacks over commercial parking lots. And also, there's added language that the zoning official can require verification that power produced will be primarily for onsite use. So this covers the 1% of applications where that might be in question, especially with these new restrictions here. Because one of the things we talked about before is, you know, how do you, how will people prove that their power is accessory to their use, whether residential or commercial? So this gives us the ability to ask for that proof, and there will be less instances of that being an issue with all these reductions and the reduction of the possible size of the ground-mounted facilities. I believe we talked about comments received from other reviewers back at the last meeting, in which there weren't many. DEP and the Conservation Commission, who basically supported the proposal. DEP suggested just clarifying which state statute we were referencing, which we did hear. So they required actions on this. It's a decision on the applications, conformance with the POCD and the comprehensive plan, which is the, sort of the combination of the zoning map and zoning regulations in the town, and a decision on the regulation amendment itself. If this is approved tonight, the effective date would be June 21st. And we should also see if anyone in the public has any comments on what's new.
Commission?
Keith, is there any need to put anything in regulation about height?
There is a height limit of 15 feet for ground-mounted.
50?
15, 15.
15. Just, the reason I'm asking is because the, you know, the previous presenter, I know we're not talking apples to apples here, so, but I got the impression that for various types of arrays, you can have some that are higher up on a pole versus lower, et cetera. So does that take into all of that, Keith? The various designs, the various types?
It does, it's.
With the 15V, okay.
Right, I'm looking for the actual language here. Shall not exceed 15 feet in total height as measured from average finished grade to the highest portion of the system. Height limit shall apply to the highest position of a tiltable system.
So that's the thing. So didn't he say, didn't they say that a panel, when it's fully tilted, you know, it's gonna be going up? And then he said it could be nine feet off the ground? So that leaves six feet for that panel. That's good, right? The math works? I'm just wondering.
Yeah, and that's why I included the bit about the tiltable system. So no matter how it tilts, you just can't exceed that 15-foot height limit.
All right, so they might not be able to go the full nine feet off the ground, okay.
I think that commercial one, there's the nine feet to get up out of the flood zone. There's tall legs, usually you don't have tall legs like that.
Okay, and I'm assuming they can't put anything like that in a flood zone if, on a private property, correct? I mean, if it was wetlands or something like that, they're not going to be able to put this, okay.
Well, I mean, with these accessory ones, you could, but you'd have to meet all the FEMA floodplain requirements and that height limit.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of this? Is anyone opposed to this application or general comments? Mrs. Donarumo, you have to take the mic from Keith.
For the record, my name is Carleen Donarumo, I live in Parketuck. At the last meeting, Mr. Deepman had a concern about the small lots, and so did I, and I still do, even with the adjustments that have been made in the proposal before you tonight with the additions for Keith has made. You know, 2,000 square feet, I live in a long ranch, and my house is 2,000 square feet. And I can't imagine 2,000 square feet being on anyone in a 10,000, 15,000, or 20,000 square foot lot. That's a pretty big array. I should have brought you a picture of my house, so you could see what it looks like. But anyway, so to me, it's very bothersome. Even a 10%, of a 10,000 square foot lot is 1,000 square feet. To me, that's still a lot. You know, Parketuck was developed long before zoning in our town, and a lot of our lots are smaller than what's required today. My son just bought a house that's on a 20,000 square foot lot, and I just can't imagine a 2,000 square foot array of that property, especially impacting my neighbors. To me, the 10, 15, and 20,000 foot square lot, people should not be allowed to do a ground-mounted system. The, and the last thing that I object to in this particular proposal is that, about having to do with the, you can go, you can build in the setback. If a setback is at 10 feet, you can build it in the setback. Again, I think it's going to be an intrusion for neighbors to have to look at it and live with it. And I just can't support this for those reasons. Everything else, I have no problem with roof-mounted, but ground-mounted, for these three zones, I can't support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, hi, June Strong, 45, New London Turnpike. So I'm in support of this proposal, but just for general clarification, I know that when the solar panel people come and assess your home, they do go by personal consumption of electricity. And just to be sure that the square footage that you are allowing for a ground-mounted solar array is enough. And if it needs to be more than that, just for understanding, they can come and ask for a larger area, as long as it's within the 10%?
And under 2,000 square feet in area that's ground mounted.
Okay, so what if they need more than 2,000 square feet, just for the electricity of their home, you know?
This regulation would just limit it at 2,000.
Would just limit it at 2,000, okay. For ground-mounted, all right. And I would also encourage you just to stay within the setbacks, because it could be, you know, for smaller lots, to have something, you can't put a shed within the setback. So you should consider just also having the arrays within the setbacks. That was it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Rick Newton, Better Brooklyn, Mystic. I also share the climate change task force. I just want you to make you aware of a program that's available to any town in the country called Soul Smart. And it's a free program, and they'll come in and assist the town in reviewing regulations, reviewing the process for solar permitting, train the employees, and just make sure that everything is done the most efficient way possible. I noticed that in the planning report, the restriction for ground-mounted arrays not exceeding the amount of electricity that's used on the property. Well, the purist standards are changing effective next year. There's going to be a buy-all, sell-all type thing, where you can have solar on your house, but not use solar at your house. You just sell it to other source. And there's also a plan, a provision in the regulations to allow oversizing the, what you put on your house to accommodate for future changeover to electric, utility, electric heat, and for, allow for two electronic, you know, EV, electric vehicles, even though you don't have them on your property currently. So you can put in oversized units effective next year. This is somehow associated with the Green Bank people. And it's also, if you elect to go through this program, it counts towards a sustainable CT program, which the town is heavily involved in, in trying to gain points for that program. My only other comment was, not related to solar, but our regulations don't talk about geothermal at all, do they? And since this is being included in the renewable energy provisions of the regulations, do we need regulations for geothermal? Because that's something that could come, you know, as big as solar.
Excuse me, does the agency that you said?
Soul Smart?
Yes, Soul Smart. Do they also consult on geothermal?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't particularly do any business in solar.
Okay.
But I often think they can green bank it, probably, I think that.
Thank you. Oh, all right, well, that's good to know. Thank you.
Anyone, there's no one else to speak? So, any of the committee, will we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Oh, Ryan, did you want to?
I'm sorry, Ryan, you could. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, I have it. Do I hear a motion on this zoning amendment?
Make a motion to approve this amendment.
Do I hear a second? Discussion.
Keith, if I may go, I thought we were keeping it out of the setbacks, did I misread?
No, you can be as close as 10 feet to the side and rear setback, regardless of what zone you're in.
Because it used to be four, and you moved it to ten.
Yeah, and the current regulations on the books now, it's only four.
Right, and you went to 10.
Right, right. So in some cases, that might be a lot closer than the normal setbacks, but yeah, it could be four now.
Keith, did you consult with Soul Source?
No, no.
Smart, Soul Smart, no? I just.
We did actually, too. We did actually, that was one of the publications that I was sort of, was something that came from, that was actual information that they had online. So we did look at that, that was one of the three, or four publications that I had sent around.
Right.
But we're sort of a subcommittee looking at various regulations. So we did, we did have a nugget of that information.
So why, why did, why did you decide to continue with allowing in the setbacks? Were you just, I mean, it was there, sure, but who knows why it was there originally? So what was the rationale for that?
A lot of it was based on guidance documents that are out there. I don't think limiting it to the setbacks would necessarily be a bad thing.
I'm always, so I always look at these things, it's better to be more conservative, make conservative changes. And then if we get an onslaught of people saying, you know, I now want to put it two feet into my setback, or I now want to, you know, have a solar array and I have a smaller lot, and we get a number of people who are coming forward with that, we can always expand. I think it's hard to contract once you've got that. So I'd like to suggest that we deny this, or if we approve it, we approve it with both the change of not allowing it in the setback and not allowing it for the smaller lots at this point. We can always come back. You can always come back and say, hey, I had five people in this area that fit in the smaller lots, and they want to put a solar array, and we no longer allow it. We can come back and we can reassess. I, that's, that's my view on this. I do want to say, I think the comment about geothermal is a very good one.
All those in favor of the motion?
So, if the motion is to approve as is, then no, I'm not in favor of it.
Gardener?
Aye.
Deny, I agree with Lynn about the setbacks, or deny it. I, I, I would like to see it approved without the setbacks. And I, I think we can, we can tweak that setback and take that out and look at it, but let's, let's approve the rest of the, what? We can just take the setbacks out, we can approve everything else on this, the other things. It's just not, we're not only dealing with setbacks.
It just might be cleaner to just deny this, rewrite it, and bring it forward again, rather than try piecemeal it.
We can, we're allowed to change it where we want. I think we can change it right now, I, I don't think we have to deny it. I mean, I'm not, I would not deny, I would approve it, but I, as is, but I think that if we could take the setbacks out of it, it'd be all right. But I, I think we've gone this.
Mr. Scherer has a motion, excepting it, with the exception of allowing it in the setback.
Yes, that's right.
And that's allowable to, allow it to change in the motion?
Yeah, we can, we can change, we can change the motion.
Or if that's what the commission wants, you know, you might be able to just withdraw your original motion.
I withdraw my original motion, so we can get a nice clear.
Do I hear whoever seconded it?
I second the withdrawal.
Do I have a new motion?
I will make a motion on the decision on regulation to go ahead with Keith's proposals not yet, let's see, with not allowing in setbacks for grounders. Is that, is that acceptable?
Any, second?
Second.
Could the chair read the new, the new amendment? I would agree.
So Section 7.22.2.4.1, required setbacks would be revised to say, ground-mounted solar ener, ground-mounted small solar energy collection systems shall not be permitted in building setbacks.
Is everyone happy with that? Is that the motion?
That's my motion.
Do I hear a second? I hear a motion by Chuck. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Chuck? Lynn? Gardener?
Aye. Aye.
Amendment approved as modified. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I think we need to vote on the POCD.
Oh, true, thank you.
They can motion to approve this solar amendment on the POCD and the comprehensive plan.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose?
Oppose.
Abstain, oppose. Motion passed. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So will Mr. Scherer.
Second.